I would like to reconvene in this regular board meeting and the next item is to accept the agenda for the remainder of the evening.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
This movement is seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, that was still a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries on as we bring us to room number 05, public comments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to make comments to the board? I see no indication of that, so then we have to just our UPD and staff introductions.
We have several, who would like to go first?
We'll go first. All right, thanks for having us here this evening. I'm going to bring up both the staff as a team.
Sure, yeah, please do.
We have Alex Higgs, he's our new athletics coordinator, and then Bethany Soroka, she is our membership and facility coordinator. Both staff will be housed at the, what we're calling the hall, so I'll let them share a few things about themselves to you, and again, thanks for having us.
Sure.
Make yourself comfortable.
All right.
We only expect about a half hour conversation.
I only got twenty-seven minutes.
Darn.
All right, hi, my name's Alex, I've been working with the Park District for about, this is my seventh ongoing year. I started when I was sixteen at the pool. Starts the life, well, I started as a customer service representative at the pool, and then I became a lifeguard a few years later, became a manager, and from there, I helped train and hire new lifeguards throughout the facility, as well as reinforce the safety procedures we have at the pool, and tried to also make them more, I don't know, specific, more trained. And then, I saw this opportunity, and it's something I've always wanted to do. Sports has been my whole life, and I've always figured that if there's an opportunity there, I'm just, I'm gonna go for it. And I honestly did not expect to get this job at all, and I'm very happy and grateful that I did get this job, and I'm very excited to see what happens in the future, and I'm very excited to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bethany. Before I was here, I was with the City of Villan Grove, I was there Director of Community Center and Programs and Services, so I opened their new facility that just opened in March. That was a very great experience, but it was a lot for one person, so it was, I learned a lot about facility management, and I'm excited to be part of a large team again. Before then, I was out in Colorado, I was with the town of Berthoud, and you are familiar with that area, for six years, and they opened a rec center out there as well, and that was a great experience, because when I started with them, kept getting voted down, there was, there was not going to be a rec center, I was over their sports and their programs, and then, about my second year in, it got voted in, and to see that evolution of it being created from the ground up and being part of that team was awesome. I'm from Seidel originally, a lot of people ask me, why, why are you here then? But my family still lives in Seidel, and everyone was getting older, and it was just time to come back, so I am very excited to be a part of opening this new facility, and I just can't wait to bring stuff to the table. It's awesome.
Welcome, it's exciting.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
Hi, everybody, I'm here to introduce Ally Shaw, who is our new office service specialist at the Phillips Recreation Center, and I'll let her tell you, tell you all about her.
Hi, I'm Ally, I originally started with the Urbana Park District, also like Alex in the Aquatics Department, as a CSR, in two thousand and seventeen, slowly worked my way up through the swim lessons program, coordinator, manager, and just kind of worked with their programming and their special events, tried to kind of get the name of the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center out there. Yeah, trying to think, sorry. So my original, why I originally applied for the position was just because, you know, get your name out there, kind of see what, how far you can go with the Park District, kind of see what I could bring back to the community, and thankfully, I was offered a position.
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
Great.
Welcome. Welcome. I just got one comment, Ally's doing a great job, she's done a great job for us with the aquatics, Alex, same way, I guess, one of the benefits of our Park District is we have year-round aquatics, and when you do that, you're able to develop staff to this level, so we're very happy to have both of you, and you as well, Bethany. But again, it's the perfect example of bringing on our part-time staff, keeping them around, training them, and ending up with two great full-time employees, so.
Definitely.
I'd just like to say, as a board member, I'm particularly proud that this organization has, time and again, grown people professionally within the ranks, and given them the opportunity to shine.
Absolutely.
Great to see that happening still.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks all.
Thanks for having us.
So, brings us to room number 06, the Park District Advisory Committee Report. One included in our package, anyone here to represent?
I mean, the, I mean, it was at the prayer play, it was an awesome ceremony, prayer play, all of us, and.
Okay, are there no questions of Cedric on that? Let's move on then to the consent agenda. On our proposed consent agenda this evening, our approval of the minutes of the September third board study session, approval of the minutes of the September 10 regular board meeting, I have received the three departmental reports, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude.
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda, and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda, agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Has been moved in seconded, though I should ask the question, is there any commissioner wanting to remove anything from this consent agenda? I don't see any indication of that, so, it's been moved in seconded, and under the rules of the consent agenda, for the items remaining on it, as there is to be no discussion at this point, so we begin our roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously, approving all the items that were originally on the consent agenda, which brings us to room number 08, reports, ready to move on.
Well, now the fun will begin. We'll start with our revenue and expenditure reports for the month of September, five months into our fiscal year. Page one here lists all funds, excluding our capital improvements fund, noting here that revenues are ten million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, twenty-nine, and this is largely due to our fifth property tax distribution, which we received on September twenty-seventh, two million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so we're currently at about ninety-three point one-five percent of distributions received, compared to ninety point nine-six at the same time last year, so a little bit ahead of the game, that's good, got a little more to come. Expenditures here, four million, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five, this gives us a surplus after five months of five million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four. Page two is sum two, this is the capital improvement fund standalone, noting revenues here, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-six, and expenditures greenland, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six, this, of course, is an deficit of two million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and Page three is sum three, this is all funds district-wide, here we're just noting the very bottom line, that our ending fund balance of all funds aggregate, twelve million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty-eight. And then the remaining four pages are individual fund reports for our working funds, a general recreation museum, and the last page being UIAC, and I normally do not have much conversation on those reports, but I think if anybody's looking at our pool, last page, being at negative three hundred and forty-two thousand is a little bit out of the normal, but we all know that we've been working aggressively with the school district to make capital improvements there, and agreed upon list of items, and a lot of that happened while they were closed, so those, those are all rolling in now, and normally where we wouldn't have to be doing inter-fund loans to cover this, we would wait until the end of the year, and wait until the school district, they pay their fifty percent share of the entire fund, I filled this out already to get our fifty percent of the capital that's been going on aggressively here in the last few months, so when I get into the treasury report, we're going to have an inter-fund loan activity, which we normally don't have this time of year, but that's why, and we're acting on it in the moment, not waiting until the end of the fiscal year, so.
Slide power looks good.
Exactly. All of the things I've done, we did it, so. Were there any questions on the budget reports, capital budgets? Excuse me, revenue and expenditure report. Moving on to treasures report, this is the amount of cash the district has on a single day, on September 30th, 2024. Our twenty-five funds are listed down the left column, and where funds are invested are displayed across the top, noting in the bottom right-hand corner, that total investments on this date, fifteen million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Page two, the top section, on this page lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts, so of that fifteen million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, on hand, thirteen million, one hundred and seventy-six, four hundred and forty-three is out in investments at varying rates. The bottom of page two, this is the inter-fund loan section, again, this is where we will see a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar loan from recreation to the indoor pool, the expectation is to have that paid back mostly in full by the end of this October, this month. And then page three is the treasures report that lists the disbursements for the month of September, vendor payments do match the accounts payable in the consent agenda, and the total disbursements, which include payroll and all vendor payments, one million, six hundred, two thousand, two hundred and forty-six. And I present to you the treasures report for audit.
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Has been moved in seconded, is there any discussion on the board? Hearing none, that was still a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously.
So we will move on to the capital budget reports, and page one here is the 2019A budget, we had just a few expenditures down here at the bottom, using our DCEO grant, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand towards Core Number Sixteen, Construction Edges Number Sixteen, and then also using our general fund transfer, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for portion of Core's Number Sixteen, and then approximately seventeen thousand in miscellaneous supplies that Bethany lists, that furniture fixtures and equipment list that we've been whittling on. The 2024 budget, we received six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars towards tributes, trees, plants, et cetera, we also did receive three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant DCEO funds, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this was part of the written, incurred, previously incurred expenses application for Crystal Lake Rehab, but we were using it, and so we're going to use that towards the Ambucks, was it Interceptor Cross, oh no, same, Crystal Lake, the Interceptor Crossing. So of that three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one of that will be going back to Bama and Channing Sanitary. So it kind of has to be. And then thirty-two dollars in this line is construction, food projects, sand, concrete, things like that. Twenty twenty-three budget, two thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars went towards an Arbor consultation and an oak assessment, and we also paid Mid Illinois their number five bill, using bond money, six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, I believe that spread across a couple of budgets here, you're going to see, also towards some plants and some racks, and then we did pay seven thousand two hundred to Adams Memorial for engraving the donor stones holders there at the interpretive professor bowl. Then in 2022, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, again to Middle Illinois number five, using Ozlad, that's the split, and down a little bit lower, the twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars to Davis Electric, this is our second series of billing from them, and there is no activity in the remaining budgets, twenty-one, twenty-eight, or nineteen. Any questions on the capital budgets? Over to Derek and Amy. Thanks.
Okay, I've got my pictures for kind of two big ongoing projects, starting with Prairie Play, so over the course of the last few weeks, and since our last board meeting, a lot of site work, so it's the mill and resurfacing of the parking lot, restriping, preparation for landscape beds, the landscape stone, wall seating blocks, those are all placed, and then landscaping went in this week, and turf seating for restoration of any kind of disturbed construction areas, that was also completed this week, so now it's a lot of watering going on at the site with those. This is one of the two paths that's connecting the ramp that goes up to the five to twelve, down to what will be a donor bench, one of the donor bench locations here, a few more of the sculptural bench.
Is there another way to get to the twirly thing?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not, it's not in the picture.
Yeah, that does not look very wheelchair friendly.
Yeah.
The squishy stuff goes right up there.
Yeah, so that squishy stuff was also done in a lot of these few weeks, so it appears that's poured in place.
Squishy stuff.
So this is actually, well, here it is, this is the access to that, and here's the pad for the bench, so that's on, in a number of locations, I think the color turned out really well, so I think we're all happy with that, and so that's, you know, at the entrance to the zip lines, the entrance to the group spin, it's at the, I don't have a picture of it, on the other side of the five to twelve, when you come in on that main entrance, and then here's the ramp up to the five to twelve, and on those sloped edges here, we have that poured in place.
I just want to say, this material, it's really, I think this is the first time we've used it, we've been cautious about it, early, a lot of the course, we saw, seemed like they had early failures, holes to cut in, sometimes, you know, different types of things, but it's become much more standardized, and I think the quality of the product has improved, and talking about playground apps, Tim and I, Tim and I were there the morning, they're actually installing this, there's some uncertainty about one of the applications, and the stuff that goes underneath, it's basically like, like rubberized wood chips, that kind of material, and they mix it with an adhesive that helps it bind, they poured that out first, and this final color code is really just cosmetic, and then we also specified having a much more impact resistant, or attenuating surface than the standard, and so it'll be safer, and it passed those tests of bond colors.
Does that color grow off on anything?
No, no.
And it have fade resistance?
But, we were told, the first thing we would see are spider cracks in the surface, and to watch for those carefully and often, if you catch them quickly, it's an easy repair of the top coat, if it gets too far, then you've got to remove a lot of the surface, so I think it's less fading, more about just sort of watching for those spider cracks in the first envelop.
We have that surface at Robinson, on one of our playgrounds, our base playground, and it is amazing, we haven't had, it's been five years, we haven't had any problems, so. That's good to hear.
It looks great, and I have to say, it's very difficult to get to Prairie Play before the workman moves early in the morning, so they're there and working hard.
So, that moves us to pavilion work, so if you recall, we have new gutters, new roof, painting, new wood underneath the roofing, but lighting now is done over the course of the last few weeks, so this is the underside of the pavilion, the surface mount, pendant type LED fixture that we're hoping will prevent bird nesting. So remaining on the pavilion, here's a picture of the flooring work going in, this is that epoxy floor, I think we're all really pleased with the color, going with the overall aesthetic of the building, so the interior here in the restrooms, this is the women's, no, I'm sorry, this is the men's, they pulled the partitions, those will need to get reinstalled after they did the full flooring, and then everything was painted inside, and the new lighting fixtures in each restroom as well, and then here, I just kind of took a close-up picture, you can get a better, and hopefully shows a little bit better of what that look is. So it's basically similar to what's in the bathrooms here at Curve Two, at the new building, health and wellness, restrooms for the up-deck pavilions, have been our new go-to standard for durable and aesthetically pleasing flooring. It's very nice. So then, I think, one of the other things still remaining on the pavilion is the water fountain, that's something that's, the lead time on that may be a little bit longer, but we're hoping that we can open the playground sooner, so our plan's in the next few weeks to have an announcement, or in the next couple of weeks or so, to announce when the playground will open. The restroom's not going to open for this winter, it's, we're about at the time where we can winterize everything anyway, so the pavilion will remain closed, we'll have the drinking fountain replaced over the course of the winter and then over the spring, and then we'll try to have a, overall big celebration for Prairie Play to kick off next year's spring season, so when we start ramping up and getting real busy again.
So the pavilion will not be accessible even from?
Just the restrooms.
My pardon?
Just the restrooms.
Okay, so people will be able to come and pick hack of whatever at this point?
Yeah. And we'll do, we're doing a punch walk Thursday, so we're really starting to get to that point where we're wrapping everything up, but we're going to keep it closed until we can get everything done from the punch lists, for the most part, hopefully get some grass established. The fence, the picket fence should start going in any day now, so that's kind of one of the last items, as far as the playground area to go. Okay, health and wellness, more site work stuff, so landscaping, you can see a little bit of the striping, the parking lots all striped, they have some of their ADA parking signs, not in this picture, but those were installed, here's a look with the landscaping and sculpture put in place, and then getting into the building, this is the slide from last meeting, when we were showing how everything was getting prepared for Baby Donnelly's work to come in, her mock-ups, here's the grid, looking at it from the second floor, and then now, in mid-September, she had a few days, and we had this section kind of cordoned off for her down below with a scissor lift, this is her husband in the lift, and she was down below getting all of the materials prepared, then handed off, she had every color, everything mapped out exactly where it was going to go, there was nothing random about where she put anything, it was pretty exciting to watch it progress through. And then, here's kind of what, the pictures don't really do it justice, it looks phenomenal, people are going to love it when they walk into the building, so this is walking in, reception desk could be to the right, and kind of, the first time you can really start looking up at it, and you can see how it kind of plays on the wall, and over the course of the day, it changes all the time, depending on how the sunlight's coming in, and it'll reflect colors onto the floor, reflect them more onto the wall, or onto the reception desk, and standing directly underneath and looking straight up, I think is a really nice view as well.
Some of them were translucent, some are mirrored.
Yeah, some are mirrored, some are translucent, some are like the solid color, she had a happy accident during the installation, trying to see if there's, maybe on this orange, you can kind of see on the edges, it really glows almost neon when it gets hit by light, and that was something that she wasn't anticipating, but when you go and you look at it, you'll actually see on those more translucent colors, where it's on the edges, really glowing with neon color. And here's looking from up top, from the stairs, and then just kind of up close, you can see there's some different textures to them as well, it came out really nice.
Do they rotate or go in all with?
They do, just, they're not like mechanically moving, but with the air conditioning, and just the doors opening, there's still slight movement consistently, so it's, it's pretty cool. Let's see, so last week, with our, so we had fitness equipment delivered, for the most part, probably ninety percent done, installed, they need to come back and do a second visit, bring some of the other materials, and now everything's basically placed, final location, so this is kind of what it was the first time they came in, and now everything's spread out, and all done, so they're, they're going to come back for one more visit, we still have trainings that we're doing on a number of items in the facility, one of them is going to be with all the fitness equipment itself, so we're kind of unleashed right now to have our fitness staff use the equipment, get familiar with it, and then he's going to come back in the next week or so, and kind of go through all the machines and any questions they have, but this is obviously the more of the cardio room on the north side. And then here on the left is the more, I call it the strength room, more of the free weights and the machines, and then in the group fitness room, this is most of the fitness equipment, but not all of the equipment that's associated with the group fitness room, and then, as you remember, we have that central storage area that's kind of ample, it seems like ample storage at this point for fitness equipment, but we always, we're good at filling up storage sites. I'm sure we'll do the same.
Obviously, the balls that are on top, they won't be stacked up like that, they're waiting for some more shelving, so right now, they're just kind of throwing up their hole.
And so, and we've had an internal team that's been looking at more of the owner furnished items, and we've been meeting, I don't know, once a month over the course of the last four or five months, just to make sure we're purchasing everything that we need to, our lead times, we're looking good, we did a site walk Monday, yesterday, just going room by room, you know, what other things we need to purchase, how much storage do we need to include and plan for, so that's still ongoing, there's, we did a site punch walk last Thursday, so we did the interior punch walk about three weeks ago, we did the site punch walk last Thursday, like I said, we still have a number of trainings, we're still going through, we've done electrical, we've done the elevator, we've done lighting control system, but there's other mechanical systems we have not done yet, we're still waiting for MCS to finish up as well, and we'll have a training for all their AV systems, and then we have another kind of contractually obligated trainings associated with Core's contract that we're still progressing through, and so, Core's still been at the building, we haven't moved staff in at this point, so everything's been kind of getting pushed back, there's a number of items that are still getting flushed out from that initial punch, interior punch walk, that, you know, we don't have a solid determination on, on when that will be, be able to be completed, and we'll be able to move in and start getting ready for opening, so at this point, you know, we don't have a final date where we can say it's a grand opening, until we can get a little more assurances on when all these other items will be completed.
Have you observed what the cell service is like inside the tour?
Greatly improved, once they installed the repeater. We were having issues in multiple rooms, and Core was having problems, and then they, they did it. We were having issues in multiple rooms and Core was having problems and then they did it and...
Now my ears last through the day.
And the Wi-Fi's been working good everywhere that I've been and checking it too. So I think we did a pretty good job with that.
Exciting?
It is, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I think the key piece is, you know, as we continue to put all these pieces together and get everything solid, you know, we were thinking before the holidays to do a grand opening. And as we keep getting pushed back, we may have to do more of a soft opening. The building's open and do a grand opening after the holidays, just so that we don't get into Christmas and Thanksgiving and all that when people are out of town.
Well, we're still going to have to...
It's the 18th?
That 18th, is it?
Well, that's, we're kind of up in the air on that date. Need to get a few more things that are pretty large taken care of and then we'll be able to determine. Maybe it works, but right now, I would hold on to that date until, I mean, hold on to it. I would say that's set in stone until we get a couple of things lined up. Like being said, we just did the outdoor punch list Thursday. Takes a while to get all those things done too. We want to make sure when we do a grand opening that it is exactly how we want it to be.
So now, review the annual G O bond sales.
Yep, yep. So your packet is our preliminary planning packet from Sphere Financial for our annual Go-Bond, our rollover. And this is the same one that we have every year. There's really nothing different about it, just to highlight the important pieces. Our competitive sale is scheduled for December 5th with our board meeting adopting that ordinance on, oh, it's October, on December 10th. And the closing for that sale being held on December 19th. This is not a binary year for us. We do that every three years. Next year will be a binary year, so it'll be a little bit longer of a process to make that happen. Which is on the next page, sorry, I'm a little bit ahead. I think the key point folks here are going to want to see is, you know, what's going to be coming to us. And in this planning packet, it's looking as if on page nine, that we're looking at $963,575 based on our debt service extension basis and all those things. And currently, they still have us at an interest rate of 4.25%. Fingers crossed lower than that, but not sure. So looking at an interest investment of $40,000 and some change at the moment. So total P and I is looking at just over $1 million, $1,400,000. Those are the key points there. Looks like our fees only went at $400 year-over-year, so... Are there any questions on the actual rollover package? This doesn't tend to change. You know, when Sphere provides it, it's, the only thing that's going to change is who's going to buy the bond and what rate.
Which affects how much money we have to put into the project. No action to take until we have the budget.
Correct.
Okay, moving on into the executive director's report.
A few updates. Hopefully you've noticed the excellent You Belong Here report. Staff put a lot of effort into that. I'm pleased to see all the great things. Moving along, Kelsey Beck, you and I attended the Champagne Park District's foundation event. It's called Ties and Tennies, on September 12th, hosted at the I Hotel. We started, you know, spent so much time with our foundation. How do we continually grow, attract people, you know, what are the best ways to try to raise funds? So we're really pleased that we were able to attend theirs. They have a very different approach than the way we do it. But we did pick up some good thoughts and ideas. They were very successful. They were able to raise $100,000 at the evening, so good effort there. Moving on, learning from others, staff visited with the Mohammed Recreation Department. We went to look at Harbor Park a week or so ago. Wanted to look at their park. They have some homegrown soccer fields they kind of put together. And they also have a really neat playground and spray grounds. We wanted to kind of go over and learn and see how they pulled that together and a really nice project. It's a lot of use and is a very popular site. So we look forward to our future expansions at our own health and wellness. Just want to report, attended one of the community compact events. They have a new venture, they have some workforce development and economic development interest. Darius White, who serves on our Up Deck Group, is one of the people involved with economic ventures. So he's already worked with Corky and the new building, looking at opportunities to boost some activities over there to help for more economic development in the area and hopefully in Urbana. Attended the Prairie Rivers Network there and a meeting and learning what others do on September 20th. They also have a very impressive program. They hosted at the Pear Tree Estate. Got to see some of their internal workings. Obviously, they're also talking a lot about the herbicide drip, that's one of their platforms. As you know, some of our park sites are being monitored by them, so it's a topic that we continue to track closely. Just want to report that we had a wonderful turnout at Pride Fest on Saturday, September 21st. Think the UPD group, as always, is very energetic and really lightens up the crowd and had a really good time. Just a lot of people, a lot of folks, I think somebody said over 70 groups, different groups involved. So very impressive. Not sure if we won the award.
Yeah, I haven't heard, so I guess maybe not this year. We'll have to win it again next year.
Right, so...
We can't take it every year.
Good time though, and appreciate all the staff and volunteers coming out to help us with that then. Item seven and eight got mixed together. It's really the American Planning Association, the state chapter, had a planning meeting here at the I Hotel. I attended. Just want to report, there's a lot of sessions on climate change, what cities are doing. And I'm really excited that we have a very good and aggressive climate action plan. I think staff noted though, believe it or not, that'll be due for updating before you know it. So that's something we want to look close at as we go into that. The other topic though, that I was kind of surprised that they had a well-attended, very well-attended, it's always what I'm calling newer regional athletic complexes. We know the one in Rand Tool has really taken a lot of attention and, you know, really draws in a lot of people. There's an additional one that's opening in Springfield. And there's a brand-new $67 million one in Mattoon that is being built. So I think it's pretty clear that's the way forward. A lot of communities see it as economic development, bonding out, building these huge, and then they'll come. I think it works. We certainly know it can be popular and successful, but I think anybody involved in any level of recreation for a while knows that recreational pursuits come and go over time. And I certainly hope those developers have second and third and fourth level of uses. There's many former malls I've seen that are no longer, you know, in place. They've been bulldozed down, so not being negative, I hope they're all financially stable and will meet that need. And again, my comments to some of the people at the conference, hey, is Urbana doing something? And our answer is no. And that helps us focus on our local recreation, making sure that, you know, people in Urbana are having very similar experiences close to a moment, a very affordable price. So there's probably a place in this growing world of travel teams, high-level sports for children and adults. They are adult facilities. But like most things, there's an upswing and then a downside.
Things can change.
Things can change.
The other thing is, the scale of these are really beyond an agency of our size. I mean, we would have to form some kind of coalition to get involved in something like that. And I'm not sure that we're the best kind of organization to do so, frankly.
The fact that Rand Tool is just one of, I mean, the park city doesn't make sense.
And that too is not...
Yeah, absolutely, exactly.
Funny that company already reached out to me, they're probably going to do the list of attendees and where they're connected. Quietly declined, we're doing fine. Now, we make a, sort of another side that I notice, you know, there's enormous environmental impact on these large facilities. When I asked, my first, I was the first one to ask the question, what's the environmental impact and how's that dealt with in the communities? Short-term answer, we meet every COVID and combine. So that doesn't really speak to the aiming and drainage and the water and the lights and the energy and everything. So it sounds like I'm trying to cast shadows on what these other exciting communities have brought together. But you really have to look at it. And I think every community that looks at it really hard would probably have some concerns with that type of development. So again, I'm very grateful to be in Urbana. It would definitely get the, you know, once, twice, the third time over, you know, if we were ever to propose, you know, something on that scale. Interestingly enough, there are communities and park districts that are now joining together to sort of jointly develop these type of facilities. So it's probably the new way of recreation. I haven't heard a lot about it through the I P R A conference, maybe others do. But I think there'll be a lot of news on these. And it was interesting to see Illinois kind of moving along with the rest of the pack. There was a site down in Alabama, they showed the before, you know, rolling southern pine, you know, beautiful. Next picture, it's gone and bulldozed. And I just thought, how could you take 130 acres or so and just cut everything down? But again, that's part of how that works and there's definitely revenue, you know, growth opportunities in that business.
And that is at least a warmer climate in which you can sustain after 20 years longer. I mean, that's also, I think, we also have indoor soccer fields.
We're a tree city. I mean, I just can't see our community going for that.
No. And again, maybe there's a place and role for those, you know, type of facilities. But I would be very interested in the long-term projection.
Also be interested to know the income distribution of the participants. We have, I think, some obligation, I think we do have an obligation to provide opportunities, recreation opportunities to the entire community. And what percentage of those are able to afford to be on traveling teams and...
Yeah, I guess I was always, I mean, your questions, I'm sure you've thought about like, what's the capacity, right? In terms of the usage, is there still excess capacity here or there?
Most are phased in with amenities, you know, yet to come. But at some point, they can be built out and you can look at retro bits for new things. Hey, this is popular now, let's get rid of that and build that. So there, you know, there could be some ongoing, but it's just kind of a whole different world in recreation. I couldn't identify with it. It's just at a different scale than community recreation. Obviously, you're serving people that don't live in your community and that's part of the revenue side. You're relying on others to bring the revenue. Hopefully, they'll get good long runs and meet that need that's out there.
But I think even like Rand Tool's hotels are not benefiting, I think Champagne is benefiting from the Rand Tool Sports Complex in terms of the hotel dollars and all of that.
And meals as well. Another good point called the other support infrastructure that has to be in place.
No, it's our most, but, you know. I'm sure that that is supporting.
It is.
I believe they were only by making unique places like Weaver Park, right? That'll be this kind of combination of both, paving it all over, trying to balance each other.
Interested in this year's conference, would like to talk to others, you know, what they know about it, particularly from those areas and communities and how it does affect maybe for, maybe not local recreation patterns. We'll see how things go with that new world. Continuing on, staff at a very productive meeting with City of Urbana. We wanted to discuss our alcohol permit process. And I think we're working very well together. Obviously, our main concern is uncontrolled. We got things where things get out of hand and we had one, I think we reported this summer. At Ambucks Park, we wanted to try to find ways to avoid those things. So people are working together on process, notifications, monitoring and reporting. So hopefully, we've found a way to improve that process. I think one of the reports, it's time for the UPD health insurance renewal. I'm a part of the finance study group. We got unfortunately a 14% increase in Health Alliance this year. So we're happy with that. So we're, as always, trying to look for new and better quotes. I think I reported at least in the finance group, you know, a part of the challenge is the timing, when we get our quotes, very close to the end of the year. Rushing if you can, get new quotes in time, you can really make great changes. So it's a little, kind of a tight game on that. I should be fair though, we did not have increases over the past three years. So, you know, I guess that was good for those years. It's great when you have no increase, when you get the increase, you're not happy. So we do want to continue to look though and seek out any other quotes that might help us.
As I recall, you mentioned that the claims history was not expected.
Right, that's generally what drives, if you're raising secure cases, then depending on how they add up, that definitely affects your rate. Let's see, two other quick reports. Just want to report, Saturday, the Saturday, October 12th, at Ambucks Park is the Scarecrow Fest. It's a free activity event that's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Very well done and anyone looking for fun, Ambucks Park is a great place. And then reporting last Saturday, the Fall Fusion in downtown Urbana was really well-attended. Excellent turnout. Really happy to see the park district, we had multiple tents, different activities. And the Urbana Rotary Club folded in under the Urbana Park District's tents. And as part of the Active Aging Week, we did peace bowl painting. And we had about 100 people come through our section and help paint the peace bowls and it was really fun. Just an excellent event. I really like it because there's no, other than fall, there's no theme, nobody's selling your corn. There's none of that. Obviously, we're trying to promote downtown and get the folks into the businesses and see what they can offer in any specials and opportunities. But just a fun time for families, music, food, entertainment. And the best, neatest thing I thought, they bring all these, you know, real pumpkins for stage setting. And they announce it, take all the pumpkins. So you got to see all these happy little kids carting a little pumpkin home. I'm sure the staff was happy because they didn't have to reload the pumpkins. But it was a really nice way to just thank everybody and we saw a lot of happy faces there. So very pleased with our staff. I can answer any other questions.
I just have a question about this. Who are the authors of the recipes?
I don't know. Corky's either more about that, we can get more information.
Author of the recipes?
Well, just, we're saying it's authentic, I suppose. So I just wondered where we were sourcing this from? Their local community members or off the internet or where? I mean...
We can get back to you.
I'm sure there's one department to work with, but I'll just get that.
And also to give them credit, I think that was...
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea. It's great, I like it.
Talk ahead.
In terms of the president's report, dropping meetings, Up Deck is the 22nd of October. They're getting the health and wellness center to work with us. Be a few steps further along if we do a, you know, our membership study session, topic, get people real free. And then November 12th, regular board meeting, which we can start going through all year and financial things. Some of which we've already, have been getting across as, in terms of, we need to go over all these. We had Leah's on record, Tim has already mentioned some of what the finance study group was discussing. Our executive session was on a topic that came up then. And I think more broadly, I mean, Tim has mentioned the healthcare cost increases. More general conversation is on wage benefits and things that have to be folded into the budget for the office to deal with. City of Urbana EPA grant, I mean, they had that included in the report. And the C U S R OSLED grant for Auburn Champagne. Granted, which is pretty exciting. It's a pretty exciting. Some discussion about the del common part and potential expansion or how such things might happen. And then there was a careful project update, so I think most of that's been covered in the meeting here tonight already. Any other questions about the finance study group? The policy study group is nothing new here.
No, we meet next week.
And Parks Foundation.
We need to explain that.
And okay, so friends made community. They are possibly, but I think.
Yeah, effectively we're on the, or.
Before the UpDak meeting.
So. Next one. Watch out.
We'll be ready to forget everything. Open and man.
The policy study is exciting.
Moving on to the whole business, there was nothing removed from the business that under old business. Nothing there at all. And we went into new business. Which item is actually on resolution 2024-09, determining amount to be raised by tax.
I think you all recall at the last study session, staff had information that Laura put together on options. We had a good discussion and she's bringing it forward again tonight for recommendation and action.
Yep, so on the memo, on the backside of the memo is just a kind of a comprehensive overview, you know, of progress we've made on our levy. So at a glance, you can see what we've been doing in the past historically. The worksheet is where we'll end up this evening. But ultimately, in regular fashion, we discuss, you know, kind of a good, better, best situation and how we arrive at how we want to move forward with our levy. And this year, we looked at five options and kind of honed in on that 20%, 23.5%, and 25% to go in our black box here before we actually take action on it in November. So this evening, I guess I just should ask if there were any other questions. As Tim mentioned, you know, we talked about all of the options in our study session. And I brought the three with me in case there were any further questions or discussion regarding what action we would like to take as a whole.
I would just jump in and remind us all too, you know, we tend to select a percentage rate that's much higher than we actually receive. And that's the ongoing issue related to the tax issue with our hospitals. And if anything, would return from any, you know, property that would be available to be, available to the park district. If we didn't have enough percentage to accept in claimant, we would have to forego it. So we would not like to do that. So as we always say every year, it's somewhat of a speculated calculation. I think we're good at it now after all these many years of doing that. But just trying to hedge for anybody listening at home, you know, a black box may have one of these numbers in it. It does not represent the actual amount that the park district receives. But we appreciate all the calculation and the planning going into it.
Oh, estimated, yes, yeah.
Is that what you capture, whatever is available?
Yeah, just to remind people, this is a cart before the horse kind of circumstance because we have to make decisions based on completely and totally incomplete information. And we are required to make those decisions before we will ever have the complete information. It's not like our particle isn't our choice for that's the way that it's arranged. I still don't understand how it makes sense, but it's why we have to live.
Well, I'm going to approve a resolution 2024-09 determining the amounts estimated to be necessary for the 2024 levy payable in 2025 of taxable property is $12,88,146.
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's still roll call starting on Roger.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I carry down sleep with all five commissioners. This is to, we do have preliminary 2025 capital improvement.
Staff's got a draft, we'll take a look there.
So this is kind of our yearly actions for, I'll just kind of walk through from the attachment on the paper. In October, we bring a draft for next year's capital. And then we will come back in November for an actual action item. We will approve next year's capital budget. And then at that time, we usually also kind of go through our five-year capital plan and what we're working through. We have an internal staff capital team that's been meeting for the last three or four months to start reviewing our prioritized list. And then we develop next year's capital and then also edit our five-year capital. And so right now, we're projecting a little over a million dollars in total revenue. That bond sale amount of $963,000 may adjust slightly in December 2024. We might actually have the sale. And a lot of our expenditure lines are those regularly occurring lines you see in almost every capital year. So I'll just kind of touch real quickly on those and then anything that may be a little bit different when we have some new type projects planned. So ADA, we usually have $65,000 for ADA projects. We're looking to keep hitting on the ADA items that have been cited in that update. One of those is the APNC, the Nature Center's front desk redesign. As part of our capital process, we also reach out to other staff groups and solicit improvements from them. And then we review them and prioritize them accordingly. This is something that's been on the list for a few years, was also cited in the ADA plan update. So we're looking to get that done in 2025. And the other item is something that'll take a little bit more funding and design. And that's the PRC Phillips ramp and railing. Right now, it doesn't meet the ADA requirements on the slope and would actually need a railing to be included on that ramp up to the building. So we're going to start building funds in 2025 and 2026 ADA to start working on design and construction. We have a couple of regular expenditure lines, tributes and donations, the cost of issue for the bond sale. Vehicles and equipment, we usually do somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 each year on our schedule. That's just so we don't have a backlog and have a year or two where we're eating into a lot of our capital funding. And so on our overall schedule for 2025, we have three half-ton trucks, a three-quarter ton tool truck, custodial wagon, so this was the Toyota Prius now, when we had custodial building service workers. That wagon is now up for replacement as well. And then we have two wide-area mowers and that's all in that $250,000. Hazard tree projects, we bumped up a little bit. It's usually a $10,000 item. We're getting more costs and projecting more costs with those type of projects. And now we're at 15. Construction crews at its usual 10,000. Technology in years past, we've done $10,000 or $20,000. Over the course of the last year, we've really eaten into our previous capital year budgets with the redesign of the website and Nova Timekeeping System. So we're wanting to start building that back up again. So we bumped it up to 25,000. Recreation and operations, small equipment, that's a regularly occurring line. Mechanical replacement, that's at $10,000 pretty much every year. And what we do is we just build up a number of years so that if we have a mechanical failure, we have that set. If we get to a point where there's older capital years that we don't need it and we have enough in our newer years, we just release it to contingency and that goes to other projects. And then that moves us to trails projects. In 2024, one of the main projects that we were including was South Ridge. So obviously, we did not receive the grant unfortunately this year. So we want to utilize some funds from 2025 to help support that project. So we have that identified in the trails projects and hardscapes and fencing. And then we usually have a large project for each capital year. And this year, we're setting aside a pretty significant amount of funding for King Park. We think that would be a good opportunity for an Auslet grant to redo the playground and some path work and also rethink other recreational amenities and courts there as well. And so you'll see that called out specifically at King Trail and Playground for $300,000. The outdoor pool improvements, this was formerly UIAC capital. Now we're transitioning that with the new agreement with the school district where we're going to set aside $20,000 each capital year for outdoor pool improvements. Candidate shed demo has been an item on the prioritized list for a number of years. And so what we're anticipating is that this could primarily be done in-house, the demolition of the structure. But there's utilities there that would need some workarounds and relocations, plumbing and electrical that will obviously have some cost impacts. So we're planning for that accordingly next year. EV charging installations, I think Derek and Corky have been working with a consultant looking at potential installations around the district, including health and wellness. We're waiting on some more formalized cost estimation, but we're wanting to set aside some funds that we're prepared when we're ready to start working on that. So we have $30,000.
What is the intended use of these stations?
So for, we're looking at places where we have recreational facilities, that it can also be a draw for those facilities. We're still looking at different pricing approaches. It looks like, you know, at one point Corky had contemplated the idea of just free charging, but the cost of the unit was pretty significant for that. So we're looking at some, so it's the way to where you pay for charging. But we think for places like the new Halmos facility where we already have conduit in place, perhaps it, the recreation center and the pool mixer center would be an entity that could both provide for sustainable charging consistent with our climate action plan, but also help to draw membership.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you could go in there and charge your vehicle for a half hour while you work out, I mean, that could be time efficient for people. My concern is whether it's really anticipated that we would be providing that as a free service.
I work through that pavement at this point.
One of the last items here is the Ambux restroom painting. So before last year's capital budget process and that planning, we worked with a painting contractor list from our facilities maintenance staff on just various exterior painting projects. So we had the building here painted over the course of the summer. That was part of 2024's capital. And so we're just trying to add some of those each year. You'll see it in our five-year draft plan to some other sites. So in 2025, it's Ambux restroom painting. And then we usually try to keep around 50, $40,000 to $70,000 in contingency. And right now, we have $54,500 set for that. And then we're obviously open to hear questions, comments. Our group will meet again in a couple of weeks and then kind of finalize our plan for 2025 to bring to November. Like I said, we'll also have the rest of the five-year draft plan as well.
There are no questions, we'll just move on then to item C. Any new business removed from Senator Lee, and that was done. So we're down to room number 11, comment scroll commission. Any further comments? Okay, we have exhausted our agenda and I will be closing.
Thanks, everybody.